All right, good evening. I understand the live feed is up and I appreciate that. This is the regular meeting of the House of Education Board of Education. I'd like to call it to order here at 7:00 PM on Monday, November 21st. Remind everyone to silence your cell phones and please sign in. I would also like to remind our visitors, in order to facilitate an effective meeting, anyone who would like to speak tonight or make comments to the board, please bring the visitor guidelines down on the table outside the door, attach the orange coat of participation form and get those to Jody over in the corner. Public participation is allowed, only during public participation portions of meetings. Other than those times, board meetings are not interactive with those in attendance. Quick roll call, please.
Lamb.
Here.
Keith.
Here.
Henrichs.
Here.
McMartin.
Here.
Tennessee.
Here.
McComb.
Here. I stand in pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on my nation, America, in the best of all, with energy and justice for all. We are welcome. We're welcome. All right, it's time to approve our agenda, board members if you've got a chance. What do you think of the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So, Lamb. Second. Is there a discussion on the agenda?
Can I make a motion to add a discussion item? No, I don't know that it... I can't take action on that, but...
Well then, what would that have to do with...
It would be just clarification of Illinois School Code that talks about residency.
Okay, we've got a motion to add that discussion item. Mr. Second on that. Second. Discussion. You probably do roll calls. Who's in favor of adding those, not adding the... Amending the agenda to include an Adam School Code?
Tennessee?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Henrichs?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Yes, all right. We amended the original motion.
I move to amend the agenda to include a discussion on opening up the comment section on the YouTube channel.
Okay.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to amend the agenda for discussion. I hope you can come on the YouTube channel. A discussion on that before we move on that. All right, Jody, my roll call now.
I'm sorry. Schultz, was... Could you second that?
I did second.
No, that's okay. Henrichs?
Yes.
Tennessee?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McMurray?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
McComb?
No. All right, so we've got the agenda amended to add two discussion items. We would probably add those in order under new business. New business section. Any other discussion on the agenda? Okay, roll call vote to approve the agenda. S and M.
McMurray?
Yes.
Henrichs?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Tennessee?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes. Right. Shelley, you don't need to add those at the beginning of new business or regular business or the end of regular business or does it matter?
Sorry, Max, I didn't hear you.
The two discussion items we added, should those be added at the end of regular business or the beginning or does it matter?
It does not matter wherever the board wants to put it.
Thank you. It's now time for consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? The consent agenda approved. It includes minutes of reading this meeting, bills to pay, curfew report, personnel changes, surplus items, the Alice Activity Account, the ISUCTE Department Request to Research and dual credit class of University of St. Francis. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as to this? First of all, is there anything there anyone would like to pull up for a discussion? I'm sorry if I forgot that stuff. Here, nothing. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there something?
So, Mick.
Second. Second. Discussion. Roll call votes.
Schultz?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tennessee?
No.
Henrichs?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes. Donation. Dr. Lee, several donations this month. We had the donation from Cindy Brumfield to Mom's Pantry for $500. Ron and Marla White donated to Mom's Pantry for $500 as well. And Julie Labarre donated to Mom's Pantry for $1,000. The Mohammed Seymour Drumming Coaches donated $2,000 for theater lighting equipment. Allison Danielle Evans donated to the Music Department for percussion of $500. All Things Kids Incorporated, Corbin and Marla Byer, Lawrence and Rachel Bling, Ralph Dady, Sharla and Thomas Graham, Charles and Rebecca Holy, Reagan Properties LLC, all donated between $500 and $620 to the Boys' Cat Soccer Cash Bash Counter, as well as Janto Tijada for the Boys' Soccer Cash Bash Counter. Sunset Landscaping and Trees donated to the Wrestling Team Activities Sponsor for $500. And Imperial Pools here in Mohammed Seymour High School Wrestling Team Activities Sponsor had a donation of the amount of $5,000. For a total donations of this month of $14,360. So, we appreciate all these generous donations. A motion to accept the...
Second. Tennessee?
Okay, discussion.
Wow, thank you.
Yeah, very generous donations. Roll call vote, please.
Keith?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes.
Tennessee?
Yes.
Henrichs?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes. Yes. We need to finish the time. Is there anything tonight from the PTO?
I did get an update to read. She says, "We wrapped up close to all the dog walk celebrations. Book fairs went well. PTO plans to use the same company for spring and possibly next year, and they plan to have some more family engagement nights early in the year."
There we go. Anything for the MCA? Anything from the foundation?
Yes, the foundation still has their teacher grant application window open. So, teachers, you have a couple of days left to get your applications in. We encourage you to submit those. The time that it closes is Wednesday at noon. So, teachers, get those applications in before Wednesday at noon. Thank you.
All right. Under communication for visitors, we have three visitors for us to speak to. I want to remind you that you've got five minutes if you need it. I will try to give you a warning if you're going to close on time. As best I can get it in between your comments. I'd like to remind you that personal attacks against each other or district employees or board members or community members are not allowed. And we'll start with that news. You do not receive a petition when I'm calling this time. Sometimes I run it back up to stopwatch. This is a great stopwatch. There's not an attempt to be rude or inconsiderate. As always, best wishes and greetings to members of the board, school officials and other guests. On June 16th, 1858, Abraham Lincoln said, "A house divided against itself cannot stand." To be clear, this board, school district, is a house divided. The board members are divided from each other, and much of the community certainly is divided from the wishes of the board and administration. Going forward without correcting this division will not result in civil war. But likewise, it will also not resolve the overcrowding issue. We're again at a starting point. Despite what the board, the administration and the Bulldog Blueprint Committee perceive as the best path forward to address the overcrowding of schools in the district, many voters do not agree. Two referendums have now been resoundingly defeated. As leaders, you're at a crossroads. You have a choice of finding a consensus or continue gridlock. Three groups of voters have differing opinions are present in the community. Number one, those who vote on never having a tax increase, no matter what. Those who want a variation of the vast few plans that have been presented and defeated. And a group of voters, number three, who understand the overcrowding, are willing to support a tax increase but feel the presented plans are flawed. I fall in the third group. I would support a tax increase if the plan made common sense. But building a junior high next to the Middlestown Curry Elementary School does not make sense, in my opinion. I believe this to be true in the opinions of many other voting members of the school community. Rushing to make plans that were preordained, such as the plan for the second referendum, without proper analysis of the reasons for the failure of the first referendum, was not a wise decision. The survey after the first referendum was, in my opinion, hastily, very hastily prepared. After the results of the survey were published, one of the board members who by profession has great expertise in assembling the data into a usable form was for all intents and purposes ignored because of the rush to put a flawed referendum on the November ballot. What is the way forward? Even though you have a new business agenda, item number nine, for a spring 2023 referendum, it seems obvious that you cannot pass a referendum without the help of those who are willing to pay more but see the resolution quite differently. You've chosen to lock this group of voters out of any plans that vary from your plans that have now been twice, twice rejected by the voters. However, working with this group could provide a way forward. The residents of Mohammed Seymour School District have a strong voice and working together could offer a favorable resolution. The need for more space is acknowledged by nearly everyone, but the path to resolve the need are many. One of the key areas we could come together is the use of the present junior high. Some thinks it's too old and outdated, and some think it could be rehabilitated. I ask you to consider the latter option. Let's go see some older buildings that have been remodeled. Evaluate the pros and cons of each and then decide what we can do. I invite each of you, each of you, to come with me. I will make all the arrangements for the visits and transportation. My contact information is on the paper that Mr. McComb has in front of him. He has my permission to share it with you. You're under thirty seconds. Let us not repeat the mistakes of the past. Abraham Lincoln's wisdom could allow us to stand. Division will certainly cause this house to crumble. Thank you. Next up is Eric Henderson.
I almost tapped. Excuse me. Hi, I'm Eric Henderson. I've been attending these meetings going on a year and a half. Because of the camera setup in here, when I speak, my back is to you. No longer. For one, facing the school board does no good and as I and my fellow speakers are pretty much just tolerating. Question asked to the board is not answered, so it's you, the village residents, that I am really speaking to, trying to inform, influence and advocate for. That said, I would like to thank you, the voters, from the bottom of my heart for defeating the second bond proposal in just four months. How about these postcards the school board sent out? I'm sure you got them. How much did this cost? Of course, we paid for it. School boards are stewards of our tax dollars and the facilities and assets we entrust them with. I don't believe it is their promise to get a mindset, put it into, put it to the voters, get a resounding rejection and then repackaged and entered it on the ballot again. You have said no twice now. I pray the school board has heard us loud and clear and doesn't attempt this again in the foreseeable future. Again, thank you, Mohammed. Let's concentrate on what is taught in school as opposed to where it's taught. Thank you for listening.
We should slow down that clock a little bit to what I feel. Yeah, I'm in the same boat when it comes how I feel about things being handled here. And I will look at you guys and say, "I was ignorant. I was ignorant. I did not know that you guys were actually implementing CRT in this school system. I was ignorant of that." But now I'm not ignorant. I know you're doing it. And you folks at home, you have to understand, they are implementing CRT in this school at this very moment. And the sex education program the state has coming is horrendous. Horrendous what they're bringing on. You might not remember, you probably weren't here, but last meeting, I showed a picture of Lindsay Hall with Nicole Rummel right here, just so you see it. That's them on the University of Illinois campus. Nicole, you remember being there, even though you told me there was no CRT in this school. You liked my face on that. But here, they're working with the University of Illinois. In the opening paragraph, "The impact of the 2020 U.S. presidential election on children's mental health and the role of social and emotional learning in healing racial wounds will be explored in upcoming online parenting seminars activities." If that's not CRT, nothing is. And then when I dig a little deeper, I go to another location and I find this picture inviting attendance, parents to attend a seminar on white privilege so they can be educated about how they're racist. Again, the definition of CRT. You're familiar with that? Went away. I'm not surprised. But you're aware of it, Sonny. I know that. There it is. Know that? I'm wasting my time. Kenny, you weren't. That went away again. But you can believe me, it's there.
When was that?
That was in January of last year, '21. Been going on a long time. I dropped off a bunch of books here. Critical Pedagogy of the Oppressed. I called it pedagogy and I was reprimanded, but I'm so used to thinking of gog and me-gog. I didn't look at the verbiage until the week, the day before. And I sit and sit and I saw that it said pedagogy, like pedagogy. Look at this new sex education program the state has. Gee, it's pathetic. Now, I'm sure you guys have heard of Joseph Goebbels, propaganda minister for, that guy named Adolf Hitler. I'm going to read you a few of his quotes. "By means of shrewd lies unremittingly repeated, it is possible to make people believe heaven is hell and hell is heaven. The greater the lie, the more readily it will be believed." Look at our world today. "Tell a lie once and it's a lie. Tell a lie 1,000 times and it's the truth." Another one of his statements. "The secret to propaganda, to propagandize those who are about to be persuaded by it, should be completely immersed in the ideas of propaganda without noticing they're being immersed in it." Take your teachers that were here. All those white women who are about 35 years old plus or minus, just fresh out of college, the university system. They do 12 years of school, then they go to the university where they're told there is no God. They believe it by the time they leave. And then they get into the system, which does nothing but stroke them in the back saying, "You are right. You are right. You are so smart." They have no world experience. It's all in the classroom. And it shows up all the time and it's pathetic. And that's what that Critical Pedagogy book is about. It's about, if I'm a teacher, I can walk into my classrooms and say, "Hey, guys, how's everything going? Hey, did I tell you I'm gay?" And my gay boyfriend, he's something else. He's the nicest guy. You should like gay people. But that's another story. We'll get into that later. That's how it's done in the classroom. Doesn't have to be in the books. I see it. "Let me control the textbooks and I will control the state." Joseph Goebbels. Lincoln said, "The philosophy of the classroom in one generation would be the philosophy of government in the next." And Bill Ayers, the education motor... Gosh, how could I not remember quoting Bill Ayers? "Education is the motor force of revolution." We're in a world of hurt and our teachers are undermining our students. It needs to acknowledge and needs to be dealt with. This hat is time to cowboy up. Put on some white hats and do something. Now what's happening in this school system, show you care, people at home. Show you care.
And I'll have to hear it by next week. Time for board invitations. Just wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. That's it for me.
Don't have anything tonight. Thanks.
I have the shoulders. Mr. Lamb? I have nothing to say.
Just in the season of gratitude, I see Dr. Work is here or was. There he is. I just want to acknowledge that being a bus driver is probably the most thankless job anybody could have and that's my second part. The, but I just want to acknowledge and appreciate that I appreciate Dr. Work, that you are working so hard behind the scenes to try to make sure every kid has a way to get to school. And we are not in an ideal situation where we have enough drivers for all the buses and all the routes that we have. People get sick. We're, it's, people are not wanting to drive. But where I work, we have buses that just don't come. And so kids just don't get to school at all. Or kids get to school and then at the end of the day, the buses just don't take them home. And so then you're left leaving parents trying to scramble and figure out how to get their kid home from school. So, while it's not ideal for our kids to get to school a little bit late, I very, very much appreciate the fact that, you know, the email that I read this morning was, "We're going to do this and we're going to do this and this bus will arrive here at this point. And if you live in this area or this area, call me and we will figure things out." Just your openness and your willingness and the ability to just kind of problem solve the whole situation. So, thank you and hopefully we'll get some more bus drivers. And then the second part of that is, you know, as I listen to our comment tonight and I read many, many emails from lots and different people and I would just encourage everybody that there is an election coming up for school board seats. And there will be four seats open. There will be two for in township members and two for out of township members. You can start filling out petitions now. You need to get at least 50 signatures, probably more. And yeah, I aim for 75. And the filing date is December 12th through the 19th. So, if you feel like you want to have a voice in these conversations, the best way to do that is to run for a seat on board. And I welcome anybody who wants to run.
Just wish everybody safe travels and enjoy seeing family time. Hopefully that you have a moment to pull back from the craziness and just relax and enjoy. Something that we don't often disconnect a little bit, I guess, on Thanksgiving, so.
I tied a couple loose ends here, I guess. A reminder that the board of ed has not voted to implement the new state almost since I quit. And if anyone believes that it is being implemented, then I would suggest they call us with specific examples of what we're doing so we can investigate and straighten that. Also, we have not moved forward to implement anything with CRT. And if anyone thinks CRT is being implemented in our buildings and they have specific examples, again, they can talk to us and we'll just know. So, we can investigate that. Other than that, as other board members have said, we're moving into the holiday season. Hope everyone has safe travels and great times with family. And I hope that the year ends real, real special and real smooth for all of our folks. At this time, we're ready for a financial update with Heather Smith.
Good evening. I really know how much you guys saw my reports out there. Is there any questions or revenues are running steady with our expenses. Revenues are a little bit ahead because of the county taxes, but then the, you know, it'll slow down for a while and then hopefully go back up when they pay again at the end of the year.
Any questions for Heather? Come on, tell them the good news.
We did get a financial recognition this last year. We finally, we got 200 days of cash on you. I will say some of that's probably due to the extra grant, you know, with the SFR money and the grant money, but we did hit financial recognition.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions for Heather? Christine Northrup?
Just specifically wanted to thank our three fantastic school psychologists this year. Mandy Shanks, Allison Tomczyk and Chris Parker. Those three do a fantastic job, you know, helping us identify how to support kids. So, earlier this month, those national school psychologists, we so wanted to acknowledge them. Thank you for all you do. I included in my report for tonight a lot of numbers. I think they're pretty self-explanatory, but I'm happy to take you for answering any questions you might have.
Questions for Christine?
Are we making any progress on getting more staff?
Some slight progress. So, still short pair of professionals. And we've been able to add some support in sixth grade and eighth grade and a little bit more support in the child.
Thank you. Dr. Owens?
I don't have anything to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Dr. Owens? So, that's the board. Dr. Lee, just as I emailed you last week on the 15th, it was Board Member Appreciation Day in the state of Illinois. So, on behalf of our school district, I would like to thank our Board of Education for their tireless efforts to assist and support us in our educational endeavors. So, thank you for all you do for our students. Also, I have a certificate here. Congratulations to our board president, Max McComb. He was recognized as a distinguished board leader through the Board Leader Recognition Program, which is administered by Illinois Association of School Lords as well. And just policy-wise, under two colon, 120, with mandatory board member training, we're all in compliance with that. There is a section in here, though, I don't know if you guys have ever went through any training on exclusionary practices and the adverse consequences of school exclusion as a result of Senate 100. If you haven't and you guys would like to be... If you haven't and you guys would like to be interested in some training, just let me know and I can arrange for that. It's just part of our policy that we'll periodically review that. Good. Any questions for Dr. Lee? Okay, we're going to go into regular business, we'll do the unfinished business first, then when we get to new business, we'll have the two discussion items we added, go first and then we'll do the rest of the new business agenda. So under...
Sorry. I, I see that we have someone here to speak, but we may put his item first and then those two. We should just do one under the business and then have two different.
I, I suppose, I'm not sure which, I'd be sure to speak to him.
I would say it's number one, the new math classes.
Okay.
We just saw that.
It's not unfinished business.
No, I don't have anybody here to speak on unfinished business.
Okay, so unfinished business, Dr. Rom, well, Dr. Rom, I guess.
I don't have anything to add, we presented the courses last month, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So that we're going to ask for the education to approve the new courses that we presented last month. Is there a motion to do that? So we will do a key, uh, we'll do a motion to Keith and a second to, was that clear? Further discussion on that?
I'd love to amend the item to, um, this sentence that says, we're looking at removing speech as a graduation requirement for all incoming freshmen, um, just to remove speech as a graduation requirement. So it would start currently.
Okay, so the amendment, as I understand it, is the way this was presented to us and the vision is we remove speech as a graduation requirement for incoming freshmen. And the amendment would be to just completely remove it as a graduation requirement. Is that what you're...
Right, to let it apply to any Mohammeds, you mean, or student?
Alright, so that's the motion on amendment, is your second item?
Second.
Okay. Dr. Rom, would you like to speak to that?
Um, okay. History has been that changes are made, um, like that in terms of graduation requirements with the incoming, um, set of students, so the current eighth graders is going in, is how it's been past practice.
Okay. So the way it's, um, set up is basically, yeah, keep it past practice.
Can you say more about why you would want it immediately?
Sure. So, we had heard last year from Lindsay that the English department felt very strongly that we should not remove it at all, that it was no longer required by the state, and then Lindsay proposed that we remove it, and the English teachers opposed to that strongly, she said. And now, they want to change this. And so, we heard from, um, Mrs. Colbert, that the English department has changed the way they teach English now, and that they have incorporated the concepts that students need into all of the classes, and she said that they're incorporating. And then, Dr. Rom will let us know that there are students who really struggle with this and that it is impeding their graduation, and that it's, that students are being hurt by this. So when I hear that the English department has made this okay, or taught all these things, and I hear students are being hurt by this, and I understand that if you don't take speech, you choose not to take it, you have to take another English class in its place. So we're not reducing the number of classes students take, or the English they're taking, or simply giving them more options for what they want their English to look like after English one, two, you know, the fourth year of English. And so, if we're accomplishing all the things we need to accomplish, and students are being hurt, and we can stop students from being hurt, and we can still keep the same amount of English that students are taking, then to me, that sounds like a reasonable thing to do, given that the state law in all over requires it. And so, it seems like common sense to me that we would not want to hurt students if they're actually accomplishing all those things.
Okay. And did you go in and chat with Dr. Lee about this, or Dr. Rom?
So I talked about this last time and I talked about it at the DIRT meeting.
But I'm wondering if you, if you shared with Dr. Lee or shared with Dr. Rom that you were going to propose an amendment to what they're recommending, what Dr. Lee's recommendation was.
I said that at the last board meeting.
That you were going to amend it? I must have missed that.
I did.
So, I, I agree with almost everything you said. My concern in changing it immediately is that there are some students who have taken speech who may have not wanted to take speech and would rather have been able to take an English class, and now they're not going to be able to, because they were essentially forced, one quote, to take speech because it was a graduation requirement for them. Or students who gave up summer school time, summertime to take during summer school because it was a graduation requirement for them. So I, in, in kind of the, I don't know, sense of equity of keeping it equal across the classes, I feel it's appropriate to start it with the freshman group, because that way, it's the same for everybody. And my understanding is, for students who are struggling with speech, there are supports in place so that they are not struggling through and ultimately failing.
Um, so we do have, it is not a lot, we have a couple of kids a year that will have to retake it multiple times.
I imagine there are multiple courses that we have kids that they have to retake it multiple times.
Yes.
So, I mean, I, I, I agree with the recommendation that Dr. Lee made and the recommendation that Dr. Rom is making that we can start that with freshmen.
We do offer, I, I just, we do offer credit recovery right now for speech, which is something that was new, um, in the last two years that we hadn't offered previously. So, in the past, if a student failed speech, they always had to take, like, either the first course again, or they had to be far enough behind in credits to take it through Alt Ed. Now students have the option to take credit recovery, um, through the, in the summer when we offer that, but we also do have kids taking credit recovery courses, um, who are not like juniors or seniors through Alt Ed, who may just be behind, um, in a course or two, instead of trying to keep kids on track as much as we can, instead of waiting until that junior senior. So.
It doesn't make any sense to me, though. It's an arbitrary date. If the class in the curriculum is being covered and we really have the anxiety that we heard about and all of the adjustments have already been made, then why would we have an entire section of classes continue to have to take this? And it's just an arbitrary, just because you're not in eighth grade, you have to do it. My child is in speech right now, maybe he would have liked to not take it, but I'm quite confident that if I asked him, he would say, if somebody else has anxiety about it and they don't have to take it, and they're in my grade and they're slotted for it in spring semester, just because I took it now, doesn't mean that that child should have to take it. It, it's an arbitrary decision and I just can't stand by making a decision. I mean, there's no, I haven't been given any reason that we can't just drop it right now. So if kids are really being hurt and that's how it was presented, and if the modifications to other classes have been made such that the curriculum is there, then why not just drop that for everyone? It seems like the reasons that they came to want to drop this class are valid, and just because you're already in the high school, we're going to continue to have a class requirement for you, seems silly. That's just silly.
I guess I'm just going by the fact that our superintendent recommends that this is the process we go through. I'm looking to him as the expert in this, and I know that he's trusting Dr. Rom is the expert in this as well. If you are proposing something different, I really wish you would have had that conversation with Dr. Lee before he made this recommendation, so that we could, you know, hear what his opinion on this is. I'm, it sounds like you did not actually have a conversation with Dr. Lee about it. So if it's that big of a deal, I, I do not feel comfortable voting then, and we can have Dr. Lee go back and we can say, come up with something different. Or, or not.
But I didn't talk about it at the board meeting, so.
We, but, but it is all, I understand that, Colleen, but the issue is that this all comes down to trusting the people to lead our district who actually know how to run a district. None of us at this table know how to run a district. And so at some point, we have to say, Dr. Lee, based on all of this information, and you sat here and heard this conversation, and you were here at the last meeting where we heard about how we're worried that maybe we can just drop it sooner, and he still comes back and says, I recommend that this is what we do. I'm very uncomfortable going against the expert at the table who is saying, this is what I think is the best decision.
So what's the harm if we do it now?
That's my question, what are the negatives?
Well, effectively, I don't know, I've not thought anything about that, because that, I didn't believe that was on the table, and I was sort of, we want to brush the judgment on that. There may be absolutely no harm in it, I don't know. But I should have taken time to think about it and talk to some people about it, that's where I am. Now, I'm, one vote, we'll vote on the amendment and we'll see what happens. I'm not saying I'm against the concept, but I'm against considering the concept on the fly without having a chance to think about it and ask questions.
That's exactly, that's exactly where I am. Like, I feel like if...
When we asked our questions of this, of the staff that was here last time, all the questions we asked, we asked, is this requirement, um, is it detrimental to students? And they very succinctly told us that they had already incorporated it into other classes and they had taken care of that. The staff did not have any concerns and did not have any presentation of any harm that would be done. So we did have those discussions and we did ask the experts, because the experts are actually the teachers who are responsible for teaching it. And so if they come to this board and say, this is what we're comfortable with, this is the way that we've adjusted for this, they were the ones who told us it was doing harm to students and that they had solved that by getting rid of this requirement, I'm not about to second guess them and say, well, are we ready? They told us that they were ready. And so perhaps, uh, the recommendation should have been to, uh, do it immediately. I don't know why it wasn't, but I think it's ludicrous to say that we can't, uh, make a decision that prevents harm from kids because we didn't ask the questions when we clearly had an involved discussion with the teachers in the room last time.
All I'm going to say is, at some point, I need to trust the one employee we have, which is Dr. Lee. And he is tasked with bringing forth a recommendation encompassing what is best for kids, what is best for families, what is best for our school, what is best for teachers. If, if you trust, if you, ultimately, this also goes back to no surprises. You don't have surprises at the board table. So bringing forth an amendment that you're going to amend the superintendent's recommendation is a surprise. So when you have, uh, something you disagree with, you can vote no and tell Dr. Lee, we could all vote no, and tell Dr. Lee, please come back with a different recommendation. That's how boards are supposed to operate. It's not supposed to be just some random board member who is not in charge of the district coming up with recommendations on how to run the district.
I disagree that that's how boards are supposed to operate.
And, and that's why we are where we are.
Boards are supposed to discuss topics, listen to...
Absolutely, discussion is a hundred percent right.
Excuse me, please, let me finish. Boards are supposed to listen to their experts, all of their experts, consider all the details, all the data, and then discuss amongst the seven of them to try and reach a decision. That's what a board is supposed to do.
Right.
Not just blindly follow any single individuals.
That's not what I'm saying, Ken.
Well, it sounded to me like you were saying that you're never going to want to ever vote against what the superintendent is recommending.
No, what I'm saying is, it's a surprise when somebody brings an amendment that is against the recommendation of the superintendent. So if that, if that amendment had been discussed with Dr. Lee, and Dr. Lee came forward and said, yep, we talked about it, I'm not against it, I'm not in favor of it, I, I'm either way, and then the conversation happened, that would be a different story. But when a superintendent who is the expert sits in the room and says, this is really what I think we need to do, that's, that's who I'm going to listen to.
So, I think, one of the things we should consider is, is this a one-way decision or a two-way decision? If we make this decision tonight, when I don't hear anyone really coming up with anything that's significant negative for deciding in favor of this motion, if in a month, we realize, oh wait, we didn't think about the funding that was going to get pulled from the federal government or something like that, we can make the decision to go back. There's no problem with that. So I look at this as a, a two-way decision, and I'm not hearing good arguments against it, and I'm hearing good arguments in favor of it. That's, that's my...
It's kind of spur of the moment, I guess. If, if Dr. Lee wants to go back and make some more, do some more research with Dr. Rom and come back with a, with more details, that'd be great.
But what details do you need? Because the teachers came and told us that they incorporated it and they're doing it right now. So there is no downside out of the mouths of the teachers who made this suggested change.
If there's no downside, why did Dr. Rom and Dr. Lee...
I don't know.
Okay, can we find out?
I just said, what is the harm? I have not had an answer to that yet.
It sounded mature, my apologies. Do you have any thoughts on that?
So typically, when a student is in eighth grade and they begin the course selection process with their parents, families tend to map out that four-year process based on the graduation requirements at that time. It is not, um, typical that within that four-year path, that the graduation requirement that the district would impose a change in what is required to graduate for students as part of that process. And that goes both ways. You wouldn't reduce the graduation requirements for a student once they're in high school and they've begun to map out that plan. You also wouldn't add requirements. So while the state requires two years of science, if we wanted to go back and say, no, we feel like a really strong science sequence is a biochem, physics sequence, and we want all of our kids to take three years of science. You wouldn't impose that on kids that are currently in high school that are then having to look at remapping their four-year plan. But we have, um, kids that, you know, want to be able to go to BACs, or, um, to Parkland for their early career. We have a lot of things that kids are interested in doing, and to make those things happen, or like the work studied through junior, senior year, it does require kind of mapping out those four years. Kids that are in band chorus, foreign language, stuff.
But this doesn't change the requirements, right? This just says that as in English, this used to count as English, we didn't reduce the number of English requirements, we're just saying that this isn't one that's required to fulfill the English, you have a different choice now. So I guess I would agree if we were saying, you needed three years of English and now you only need two years of English, but what we're saying is you still need the same English requirements, it's just how you put that together is now different.
You asked, that's my response, you don't have to agree.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking if I, that is true, what I'm saying is true.
If what? That you're saying?
That we're not actually changing the requirements for English, we're just saying that what was previously required to count, you now have more flexibility and you can take a different English requirement to fulfill that.
But it does, it does change it a little bit, because speech has typically been a freshman course. So kids may have opted for things that they wanted to take, that they didn't take. Also, speech is not a weighted class, um, and it's just a regular class, and then other kids that maybe didn't take it, uh, their freshman year, now have an opportunity to take, uh, honors course or dual credit or something to meet the graduation requirements. So, I mean, those are all parts of this puzzle, and one of the reasons we typically don't make changes, um, when kids are currently in, I guess, the top pipeline.
You would work through this with DIRT as well as the English requirements or recommendation, correct?
Yeah, sure, we presented, Colleen brought it up, there wasn't much discussion around Colleen's suggestion of DIRT. Again, this is typically how changes to graduation requirements are made.
Oh, we do do what you just said all the time, right? I mean, let's not pretend like we don't change things for kids as they go along, because we do it all the time. In about twenty minutes, you're going to ask us to do it, in that twenty, probably five. We're going to hear about, uh, POS two, one twenty-two and one twenty-three, right? If you take those two dual-credit political science classes, will that count as civics?
It meets the civics graduation requirement.
So, a kid who's in civics right now has taken...
So, a kid who's in civics right now has taken, chosen to take civics, but they could have taken these two instead and had college credit and gotten rid of their civics.
And they can still take these dual credit courses as well.
Will it count as their civics requirement? But they're taking civics, just like you could take dual credit speech and, but you're not going to give them double credit for it, right?
They'll get a left of credit.
But not, but they're still taking it, just like they're taking speech now. The student doesn't need this speech, but they could take it, just like it'll be the same thing with the civics. If I sat down with my child and planned out their, their thing, but that's just something you have to take. You know, if I have a kid graduating who didn't get an opportunity to take that, they didn't. That's, I mean, that's the way it goes with high school the whole way and it happens all the time. So I don't want us to pretend like we can't possibly do this because we never do see that. Because it seems like we're doing it all the time. And we are, and it's not bad. I'm not criticizing us doing that, that's the way progression works. But, you know, we're going to offer physics 120 and 129, but kids who took physics earlier and just took physics one didn't get the opportunity for that dual credit, but now they have opportunity. So if you took it one year, now you can't take it the next year. But to me, the bottom line here is, that always happens, right? The idea that you took speech and you didn't have to take speech and maybe you wanted this other speech or you wanted something else. But here, we're being told kids are being hurt and we have an opportunity to stop it. Like, that's where it comes down to me. We can stop kids from being hurt and we can, can't see any downside to it.
What is the English requirement to graduate?
It's four years of English.
Four years of English.
Yes, it's four years of English and then Mohammed has its own graduation requirement, which is one semester of speech. And that one semester counts towards his four years.
Okay.
And you're required to take one, two, and three. You have to take this one, you have to take this two, you have to take this three, and then a fourth year of English.
That's true.
You have to have four years of English.
Right, it'd be it. But not just one.
Correct.
But she was totally captured, yeah, we just one, two, and three.
The amendment is on the table to enact this immediately instead of the incoming freshman. Has the amendment been proposed? Is there any other discussion on the amendment?
I guess I'm a little confused, but, so if we remove the requirement now, and the majority of students take it as a freshman, like, is there a percentage that we know of or?
I, I do not have that, I'm sorry, but it is-
So if they took it, it still counts towards graduation.
Correct.
But this would give those who have not taken it some freedom over the next few years to move something else into that slot.
Correct. Can I ask a course planning issue? Has the high school, have the guidance counselors mapped out speech in anticipation? Like, I'm thinking it's November 21st. They've got to be getting ready for second semester. If we end this immediately, is this going to end as of second semester? Because my freshman kid hasn't taken speech and I think he's probably slated for it in the spring, so now we're going to need, need to revamp his whole schedule, which obviously he's not the only kid who's going to need a schedule review. So are students then, like, course planning-wise, are teachers prepared to teach other courses? Or, like, has the high school mapped out, you know, well, we're going to need speech at least for the next three years for this group of kids, but starting for how many years?
Well, that's because I want, I want to do a minute to think about this. If kids for second semester call up on that speech, where are they going to go? And are we prepared to offer those courses without it just being missed?
Well, that's also what I'm wondering, like, course schedules for teachers, if you anticipate, I, I guess I'm just, I feel like we're missing the lunch of the big picture here, which again, is why we don't know these little details, that's why I'm kind of leaning on Dr. Lee on this.
Is there time constraints on this? If we were to possibly table this and talk to the counselors and teachers, see their thoughts on it, or do we want to do that or not?
We can do that.
There's no time?
There is time, because we're going to be doing-
Obviously.
I mean, they're going to be doing course selection for next year, year eight graders, this, and then the rest of the students here after the first of the year. We don't typically have huge shifts in schedules because a course is no longer a requirement in the middle of the school year where kids would be changing their schedule in the middle of the year. That could be disruptive to the master schedule.
But this still will have kids changing their schedules anyway, so.
Not if it's, not if it starts with the incoming freshman.
When do the eighth graders start choosing?
So counselors have entered the high school, are to the junior high already and have talked with them about courses and options and things. I believe they, do you know what? I, I want to say they do it before Christmas break. Do you know, eighth graders? Do you think they do it after break? Okay, so. And the current high school kids do it earlier.
The current kids do it in January.
In January, okay.
So they haven't picked it for next semester anyway?
Oh, for next semester.
For next semester? Oh, yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes. We're reg, we're registering for next school year.
Got it.
Yeah.
So why don't we just make it effective for next school year? And avoid the mid-year disruption of anything that we just did for next school year?
Oh, because you're going to encourage some kids.
Yeah, because you've got kids who are enrolled in it who have taken it yet, and have, you know, they're not going to have to take it, but they're going to choose their class to an honors class or a making class.
I mean, again, the-
It's not that easy. Like, first, how, maybe, but maybe not. Like, I mean, if I have a kid who is, who is wanting to take an AP class and now all of a sudden his schedule is freed up because he doesn't have to take speech and it's not going to be a requirement to graduate, why wouldn't he pursue that?
But why wouldn't we let it?
Because it's a master schedule nightmare! Because this is why we are not educators and we are not running this district. This is when I'm turning to these experts and saying, there is more to this than just a simple, oh, this sounds good on paper, let's do it. There's more to it. I, I don't know, Max, either call the question or just table it or something.
I move to table it to December meeting with some feedback on scheduling disruption, how that, what that might look like, since nothing, like, we still have the option of kids changing it in January, right? So we just get more-
No, kids can't change in January, so we'll start, Mr. Sturtsen, January.
Shelley, help me out here, I've got a motion.
We have to vote on the first, second-
To vote on the table first.
I've got a table and I've got, vote on the table first?
We have to vote on the motion on the table first and then he can make a second motion after that. Jeremy can just vote to table the motion we are having right now, if you would like to.
I'm hearing two different things, I think.
And then he can-
I'm hearing-
There's a motion, there's a motion that he has on here and you tell me we have, Jeremy can do it.
So Shelley, what's the process here?
I'm trying to keep track of where you're at with this. So you have a motion on the table that was seconded.
Yeah.
And then we have, what come after that?
An amendment that's been seconded and then the table. So you vote on the table first. If the table goes through, you don't vote on the amendment and you have the main motion. Unless you're tabling the whole thing.
I think we table the whole thing.
I would table the whole thing.
Then just move the whole thing and then we can vote on that.
I'm sorry, where was he tabling?
The whole discussion.
The whole motion.
The whole motion. Bring it back next month and we'll get one motion.
So, timeout, sorry. That is going to cause some issues with getting these new courses in the course catalog. So, I don't, I'm just asking if we're tabling the actual speech portion of this or if we're tabling all of the new courses.
Just the speech portion.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
So then you're moving to table the amendment. So you table the amendment, we take a vote on that. That tells us what we do on the amendment. Once the amendment is either up or down or tabled, then you have the main motion on the floor, which could then be tabled, amended, again, to remove speech.
All right, so-
And how would we, Robert's rules?
So, we've got a motion to table the amendment on speech. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A roll call, please.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Schultz?
No.
Keith?
No.
Maya?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Mcmurray?
No.
McColl?
Yes, we table it. Okay, so-
So now that's tabled, now the main motion is back on the floor. If Jeremy wants to move here or someone could move to amend the main motion to remove the speech graduation requirement.
Okay. Okay. Just so I'm understanding, so in order to be able to have this conversation next month about speech, then we have to move to remove the speech language requirement, with the speech requirement-
And table it until the next month.
We can still do the rest of the courses.
Yes.
Which Dr. Rummel reminded us we should, advanced course catalog.
Okay. All right, well, I move to amend the motion that we table the speech graduation requirement discussion to next month, next December meeting.
Second.
And the rest of the motions is intact?
Yes.
A second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Mcmurray?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
McColl?
Yes, so now we're back to all the, the new courses without-
Without the first sentence of the last paragraph.
First sentence of the last paragraph. Any discussion remaining? On the amended motion. Okay, word down, amended motion, roll call, please.
Maya?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Mcmurray?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
McColl?
Yes. Okay, we'll bring back this graduation timing on the speech next month. That finishes unfinished business, correct? Yes, okay. Next is 1A, which is the 23, 24 new courses at Seymour High School.
Yes, so I have three new courses and I'm going to ask Mr. Sia to come up. He's going to share a brief presentation on AP stats.
Thanks.
Yes?
My name's Andy Sia. I've been a teacher at mom Seymour High School for 21 years now. And it's relevant because of this course that we are trying to offer. So actually, kind of like to start, look, I'm going to keep it short, but today is important to talk about what this class or who this class is going to affect. I would say it is primarily geared toward the core level student. That's a student who starts in Algebra I as a freshman. Another way to say it, it's the kid when they were in eighth grade to eighth grade math. That's the base of our school. To be accelerated is not to put people behind, it's the core of our school. And 22 years ago, there was not much options for those students. They either had to try to jump into precalculus as a senior or they took no math. Most of the kids did not take a math 22 years ago, because there was really no option for them. But 21 years ago, they gave a naive, stupid Korean kid this stats book and said, hey, let's give them some options here. And so we started teaching statistics and we added trigonometry. And over the last 20 or so years, we've had about 50 to 75 kids taking this class, whereas in the past, they would have not taken any math course before. And then in 2019, 20, we brought in discrete math and now there was two options for these students. So they could take the honors, honors stats and trig, or they could take the discrete math. And after a little bit of wrestling with the pandemic, I think we've really stabilized. So this year, we have 60 kids in trig and stats and 60 kids in discrete math. That's by far a local maximum, like, that we have so many kids now taking that fourth year of mathematics at our school. And so they have these two options at the moment. And what we are moving toward is AP statistics. So this would come in place of the honor statistics. It basically takes it over. It obviously is an AP course, so it gives them a chance to take an AP class and get that credit, as well as it forces or it pushes something that I think is really important, data analysis. That kids would be able to leave this school saying, I think I understand numbers in a way where people give me information, I can analyze it and make my judgment upon this information. And that's really the benefit or the rationale here, is that this is an AP credit for a kid who they would say are the normal kid in our school, not the calculus kid, it's the kid who starts out in eighth grade math in eighth grade that they can by their senior year take an AP class. I think that's pretty great, that our school could have something like this. The course progression would look something like this. So Algebra I to geometry to Algebra II and then to AP statistics, but there are other avenues as well for kids in different places to also take the AP statistics. It gives a lot of kids access to this type of course, but I want to kind of emphasize that it really is primarily for that kid who took Algebra I as a freshman. I have the college board course objectives here, and it's not super important that, like, it's like, oh, we see the nine different chapters, let's say, that they have to study. What's actually most important is that right now, the statistics course that we teach at our school covers roughly seven to nine of these topics. So like, the class that we already have covers a lot of that material. And so the transition to an AP statistics course, which be, which would be a year-long course, I think would be very doable, if that makes sense. Instead of giving me one semester to teach the honor statistics, give me a year to teach the AP statistics, I think is a very reachable goal for these students. And that's one of the big things, is that this is a class for those kids who are transitioning into college. Like, we can fairly say that a kid who is in AP calculus as a senior, they're ready to transfer into college. But the kid who is taking this type of course, they're saying, hey, I really want to go to college and I want to make sure that I'm well-prepared for that four-year university. And so this course will be designed knowing that those are the kids taking this course. It's not for the kid who's been in accelerated their whole life, it's the kid who's been at the core level their whole life and then as a junior saying, hey, I want to go for this next level. And that's how the course is designed. And so, I don't know, they tell me at all the meetings that I got to make sure to do this. So based on projections for next year, like, I think there's not going to be a lot of, like, teachers moving around and like, a lot of kids, like, getting left out or teachers getting left out or causing havoc with the system. Like, I think it'll fall really nicely. Basically, right now, Mrs. Potter and I, we split those 122, 120 kids, and next year it'll be some version of that as well. So I would say this is as much minimal chaos as possible. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to field it. If you have any questions between now and you have to vote for it next time, please feel free to email me and I'll be happy to answer those questions as well. Are there any questions?
I just think it's great that we're making space for a class like this, so thanks for being the charge on it, because I think math is such an important part of learning and anytime you can give people more access to something that's achievable for them and that they can be successful in, it's a good thing.
Especially this math. This, this kind of math is, is beneficial to anyone.
Yes, Andy.
We'll stay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
So quickly, I will transition to the other courses. So the other two courses that were mentioned earlier, these are- physical science courses, so you have 122 and 124. Each course is a one semester course. Together, the two courses meet the graduation requirements that the state has set for civics. So the way the law is written, um students have to have national, state and local government to meet that civics requirement. And so that's why they either need to take high school civics or they could take uh both of these dual credit um civics. Um, again, we're really, one of the goals that we have is striving to help kids get their general core classes um in high school as much as possible. Uh, Mr. Pogue is um able to teach those courses. Um, so it's something that we would be able to offer in-house with our own instructor. Um, and an opportunity for kids to earn um some credit in high school.
To clarify, each, each class, each course receives dual credit.
Correct.
But in order to receive civics credit, you have to take both.
Correct. So you could, if you took civics now as a freshman or sophomore, um you could elect and just take 122 if you wanted to as a senior. You wouldn't have to take. Yeah, and still get the dual credit for it. Yeah.
You just said this already, could you still take 124 and get the dual credit for that?
You can get, you will get dual credit for either of these. You don't have to take both, you can take either or. But to meet the civics requirement for graduation, you have to take either both of these or the high school course.
Right, but for kids who have already taken civics.
Correct.
Because it was a requirement. And now do they have the opportunity to take both of these classes even though they've had civics?
Correct.
And get dual credit?
Yes.
So.
So they can take one or the other.
Because it's the same, the exact same thing. Right.
I think Mr. Pogue forgot one thing that's uh in both classes probably used to be added in the description there. Corruption. I'm serious.
So these are the, these are the um, the course descriptions from Parkland. Um, so we don't have a lot of leeway with that. These are Parkland courses, we have to teach them.
Are you offered to be a guest lecturer?
Any questions on these two courses? And I do believe this is the end of the new courses for next quarter. Alright.
We're going to have access to item 1A, 1B. Um, is the discussion item on uh school code presidency.
Thank you, just a second, I'm going to pull it up.
And then 1C.
Okay, so I have been contacted by multiple people and in conversations and um sorry. Um, and phone calls um Ken regarding your move. And I don't, I'm not an expert on school code, so this is where I'm kind of stuck. And I was hoping can that, I like, can you clarify, have you moved?
Have you called Ken about this before?
No, I haven't.
Well, you see, we should talk about it in a board meeting.
I do because it relates to the school code. So the school code says that vacancies happen when elective offices become vacant within the meaning of the act unless the context indicates otherwise. If one of these things happens, and it says if you are no longer an inhabitant of a particular area from which you were elected. If the residential, if the residence was part of the election. So I, I, I just need clarification, like is, is this an issue that we need to deal with or have you not?
No, you don't need to worry about this.
So you've not moved?
I would rather not discuss my personal life in front.
But it affects our voters and it affects our school district and we are potentially violating school code.
Okay, I'd be happy to discuss it with Shelley. We can do that.
Okay, so you're saying that you.
I'm saying I don't want to discuss this in a public meeting. And I, I would want to.
Because it's the public who are contacting me and saying.
That's fine, they're going to open contact with me as well.
Well, they probably have weighed at you on Thornwood and said hello, trick or treating. But what I'm curious about is if you are violating school code, why are we even having this?
I'm thinking we discuss it with our attorney to see if she thinks we're violating school code. Uh, in my opinion, not. Yeah, but I would ask that we not discuss personal addresses and other personal information.
Oh.
In public or in peace.
I, I did not share your address, like some.
Uh, you did mention my address.
Share your address.
Alright. I'm inclined to let Ken talk to Shelley and then we'll.
Can we, is that, uh, it is, I don't know that that's, Shelley, is that a closed session topic? School code?
No, this would not be a closed session topic, but I'm happy to talk to anyone offline about it outside of the board meeting.
Okay.
1C, YouTube. Megan wanted to bring that forward.
Megan wanted to bring that forward, so she did. And um I think we've been asked several times to have a discussion on whether or not we would open up the comments section on YouTube. And so I would like to have that discussion. I have no problem with opening the comments on YouTube. And I would like it to, I'm going to ask for a vote in the next meeting to actually have a vote that comes forward to open those comments on YouTube. I've asked previously, I don't know what it's going to take to actually get that on the agenda. I'm hoping that this is going to actually do it. But this is my official request that that is on the agenda at the next meeting for vote and action.
Good. Any other comments on that?
What are the potential negatives of that?
I mean, my guess is the potential negatives are all social media potential negatives, right? People making comments that are inappropriate, but I mean, I, I. Are posts on all the other social media outlets, right?
I guess, I guess a question for Shelley, then is any, are any of those comments, they've become part of the, the record, the public record for the meeting? Or is that just comments on YouTube that are not part of the public record?
Well, they likely, depending on how your channel is set up, they might not become part of the public record. Concerns about them being out there and trying to evaluate them and someone having to monitor it is always a challenge.
What um are the potential liabilities for us if we don't monitor those things? Because I would say if people want to say what they want to say, that's on them, it's their personal responsibility. What's the, what's the liability for us?
Yeah, I, I would love to talk to Max or the two of you offline about that. I'm, I'm hesitant to provide my legal opinion in public session like this.
I just, I don't know what the legal ramifications are, I'm sure Shelley will, will share those with us. Uh, I, I guess my thought is this. There's a lot of parents and employees who like to watch every meeting so they know what's going on. Some of those same people are not on social media because of the comments and the personal attacks and, and things just get outrageous and they just don't want to deal with it. And I, I would hate to turn um our information channel into that. My opinion is if you want to make lots of comments, go on my, on the talk or on the other various social media networks and, and go at it because that's all happening there. And um, and folks that watch, uh, the, watch our broadcasts is kind of wanting to know what's going on. They don't want to get into the, all, all the heavy back and forth fray between sites. They, they just don't, that's not what they want to do.
But I think the difference is, is that those sites are actually controlled by a person who has uh the ability to censor uh those posts. And so it really is not the same as the district opening up people's ability to speak.
Well, I, I think we're going to find out that we've got some kind of censoring requirement. Um, because there are certain things we probably can't allow to be said either. I don't know, we'll, Shelley will have to find out.
Jared, are there, if, if we open comments, can an individual YouTube user shut the comments off so they don't have to see them?
Yes.
So they could actually, if someone didn't want to see them, they could shut them off?
They could. So we're talking about here, they're talking about chat, we're talking about comments. Chat they can turn off, comments they cannot. Right, so comments are what happens after the meeting, you scroll down the whole video. Chat will be off to the side, off to the right concurrently during the meeting. Once the meeting concludes and the stream ends, chat ceases to exist, right? That, that is, they, people can see that. Comments occur after the fact.
So once, once the, the livestream is over and then people can comment. So even if we open comments, people couldn't comment during the livestream?
They can comment, but they, you would have to refresh the, the videos in order to see those comments. Uh, the reality is quite frankly, I don't think we're responsible for monitoring that stream, right?
Well, I don't either, that's why.
But, but the reality is that's me, right? I am the one that's managing the stream, right? We, we do not allow comments on any of our Facebook, Twitter or anything else because we are pushing out information. We are not reading the information in. And ultimately that ends, lands in my lap. And I'm not going to be able to choose what's acceptable and what's not.
I, I think the other thing we need to think about is that what, you know, what, what good comes of that? If, if that's an opportunity for someone to give us comments about what they feel um or an issue they have with the school district, I think that we've got a lot of avenues in place for people to provide feedback. So for instance, I've met with several people here. Um, you guys have met with several people uh who have issues, people call you. Uh, you're accessible by phone, you're accessible by email. I'm accessible by phone, email, in person. So, you know, we, we push as a way of transparency. We push our meetings out on the videos, but if someone has comments, they'd like to have a discussion or they'd like to give us feedback. We do offer several different mediums for that. You know, I don't know, I, I haven't had cable in years, so I can't tell. You know, C-SPAN used to be on cable. And I don't think anybody in America could log in on C-SPAN. And they kind of has, I, I, they, they sometimes have a call session or something. But I mean, that was, it wasn't with the other end of the service so people could see what was going on. I can't do this much as someone.
Are we, are we required to stream on YouTube?
No.
You need to the public screen.
Okay, so, so we don't even have to be streaming this?
Correct.
Can I interject?
Uh, not during this time, no. There was a problem. Alright, so we've got a request, I guess if this comes on next month, we can deal with that. So anything, anything else anyone would like to add right now? Alright, item number two, resolution concerning review of hazardous conditions, Dr. Roy.
Hello, guys. So, Sharon, see, and uh you guys have got the list of hazardous conditions for the district. Uh, I don't have any changes to those, have been the same for multiple years. I don't have anybody living in a different area or different changes to that at this point, so uh it'd be as they stand unless you guys have questions. No.
I think it's not about this, can I just ask?
Correct.
So we provide bus service then because these are hazards, right? So you have.
We.
By this service.
This was, yes, if we transport these students, because otherwise if they weren't ahead of the condition, we wouldn't transport them. Because they live within a mile and a half of the school.
And so are we still not transporting high school students from the positions on this list?
Correct, because there's none of the high school students on the list.
But previously, we transported high school students when they were in these same hazards, right?
Previously, the last, previously the two years while I was not director of transportation, or previously with, while I was before that.
Well, we just sent something out at the beginning of this year. It said we were stopping transporting, I'm just asking if you made any.
Because there were routes, because there were routes that were created from 2019 through 2021 that shouldn't have had the students on them if they did. Uh, because we did not get reimbursed and should not have been transporting those high school students at that point. Because years, the past precedence prior to that, there were some areas that we transported students because we were doing the routes differently before COVID. Um, for junior high and high school were a separate section of the route. And if the junior high bus was going there and still was going by the high school, then high school could be on the junior high as long as there was room. The routes are not set that way. Because the area that you're referencing we changed is a pre-K or not pre-K, is a middle town bus that also has Lincoln Trail and junior high. And there's not any high school on that bus and the bus doesn't currently go to the high school with anybody in the process.
So did, did you mean we shouldn't do it or we don't have to do this? Like a few seconds ago, you said we shouldn't have those routes. Would it have been illegal for us to have those routes or just we weren't legally obligated to have those routes?
No, we just weren't obligated, we weren't obligated to do it, we weren't getting reimbursed for it. They were on there and they, and.
I just want to understand if we were, if it was illegal for us to do it or if we just weren't legally obligated.
Yeah, we were transporting without a hazard, so on the, so on the state reimbursement um that be listed as without hazard, which they were last year when I did it. I don't know the two years previous to that. But uh, they were listed as without a hazard for the reimbursement. I mean, these, so these right here, every one of these were submitted to the state, to IDOT for approval because they make the approval on who passes on hazard. And the way the process goes with the applications is if, because I ran all the applications for the area you referenced. And none of them qualified because you get the first line on the, on the application, they give you five points. If it's K through eight, they give you two points if they're high school. And they just, they were five points low and that bish about every one of them across the board. There's one area in that, for that routing area that would qualify um for ride, it's across Turkey Farm Road. But we don't have any current high school students that are in that area.
Great, it's fun, thanks.
No, this, yeah, so um I also, if I had time and, and capacity and things like that to do something different at some point. But, I mean, I, I canceled a route for tomorrow morning because I'm having people, so again, so whichever way, right now, so. But, yeah.
We're approving the resolutions concerning review of hazardous conditions.
So moved.
We have a motion to the second, second key. For the discussion. Roll call vote.
I'm sorry. Who was the, the person?
Kelly, Kelly and then Ken.
Yes.
Hardy here. Schultz?
Yes.
Lam?
Yes.
Mcmurray?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Henrichs?
Yes.
McCall?
Yes, we'll go ahead and take about 10 minutes break. Yes, we'll go ahead and take about ten more breaks. We are back streaming live, and we are back from break, and Heather is up.
Dental insurance, I had no increase in the last two years.
And we'll go with the dental insurance.
He's already said it. Second, Hennessy.
Mr., um, Dr. Schultz has moved, we approve the dental insurance. Uh, Ms. Hennessy has seconded that. Any discussion on dental insurance? Heather, anything you just feel we have to know about before we vote?
Nothing is changing, just like health insurance, we, I would just say we're blessed this year.
Okay. Good deal, any other discussion? Here we now can have a roll call, approving the dental service.
Keith?
Yes.
McMar, yes. Hennessy?
Yes.
Henrichs?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes, but don't go away, Heather, because tax is, um, estimated twenty twenty-two tax levy.
Okay, I'm just gonna say a couple words before that, I told him to leave, but I do want to thank Jeremy, um, because he has put in a lot of time and effort into, I mean, kind of what, uh, you were saying earlier. I mean, he, I have to stop him from working at night, so, yeah, I mean, he's constantly trying to, you know, he went counting cars for the hazards conditions, he's always working, he's driving as well. Um, so, honestly, I, he's a great asset to the school district, I appreciate everything he does, like everyone else, but I just, yeah. So, anyways, but the...
Transportation, Jer.
Yes.
Because you have the board member, Jeremy, for a minute, I'm like, why?
Dr. Moore.
Oh, he's great too.
Yes, he's great. I, yes.
I don't think I ever have a problem, so that's, I got...
Yeah, no, I, no, yes, I, a lot of times at night, I'm, Jeremy, what are you doing? So, so, yes, um...
He's a good guy.
Yes, he lovey, um, that wonderful lovey. Um, so, back, uh, a couple months ago, they had actually estimated our EAV to be two point six one, and I told you guys that. Uh, it did sound low, so, after looking around and talking to the county assessor, she had me go back to the county clerk and say, did you guys run this at the right level? I guess there's different levels they can run it at. They had not rated it at the right level, I know, that's a shock. Um, they did not run it after the, you know, after everything had been updated, um, before the board of review. So, with that being said, we actually are going to have an eight point, well, the estimate, eight point one one percent increase in EAV for the Mahana School District.
So, they have eight point one?
Yes, eight, and that's after the multiplicat, multiplication factor. So, that's what they weren't taking into consideration when they ran it the first time. So, they just now got all of them updated on the county website. Um, so, uh, with that being said, um, we want to make sure that we get what we can get with our current tax rate for the restricted funds. Um, so, like, we normally do, and most districts do unless they're capped, um, we, we go to, um, we balloon the restricted, um, funds so that we do not miss out on any money at that, at this current tax rate. So, right now, with an eight point eleven percent, uh, estimate, then I'm proposing tonight, and will ask for approval next, next month, that we balloon it to ten percent for those restricted funds. But you'll see in my packet, I kept the tax rate steady at the eight point one one, so the, the non-restricted funds, um, are actually lower than, you know, at a ten percent, they're at an eight point eleven percent, because we don't want to estimate those higher and take the risk of increasing the tax rate. So, that is what, um, I have right now, I will display it as well, if you guys just look at it tonight, um, for the next month, so if anybody has any questions, I've had a lot of good questions so far. You know, is the TIF in this is one of them that I got, uh, this morning. Uh, no, that's the, what we, what we had in the TIF before it became a TIF is in there, but any increases go straight to the TIF. We do get some back, um, for the East End, um, so, we can get some back with that, and it is allocated based on the same percentages that the county, um, gives us for the regular, um, tax dollars that comes from them as well. So, but, um, so anyways, so that, that is not part of this equation, though. So, eight point one one percent, uh, estimate, so ballooning at ten percent, except for the, uh, non-restricted funds, keep those at eight point one one.
And balloon.
So, I was, yeah, so, I was thinking about this ballooning a little bit, um, which I understand the ballooning, we need to balloon. But given their errors so often there, and we ballooned it, like, last year we ballooned it ten when we were estimating five point two six, and it came in at four point nine eight.
Yeah, we, yeah, we ended up ballooning last year like seven percent, yeah.
Like, I, I'm just wondering whether, I mean, it doesn't hurt us to balloon more, and then we don't leave money on the table if, for some reason, it's wrong, or, I mean, when you drive around town, there's a lot of stuff going on, right? So, um...
No, I'd be, I mean, I'd be happy to do more.
I mean, I'm just wondering whether we should be more conservative by ballooning up, it won't change our tax rate at all, and...
Yeah, no, that's fine, I could, I can do that, I can balloon as, you know, as much as anybody wants. Um, I just always got it just a little bit above, and, but I can't say that it would, I've never had it go above what I ballooned it to, but I can't say that it wouldn't, you know? I know, like, I just, I think I was talking about...
You remember, we talked about this before, but...
Yes.
Because there's such a difference here, normally I would say, wow, certainly it's not gonna go up more than one point eight percent or nine percent, but you never know.
They stop, they're not there.
They know what they're doing, so...
Yes, and, and just like, I, I think we were talking about Urbana, actually, they, because they never know if Carl will come back on their tax rolls or whatnot, so they actually balloon thirty percent every year, you know, just to make sure. And like, for example, when our TIFs are ready to come off, we will actually balloon even higher to be, be able to capture that money as well. So, I have no problem ballooning more as well, I mean, I can, you know, go to fifteen percent, or...
Do we, if we're not change the number you balloon by, do we have a motion?
There's no motion here, right?
No, we're not doing that.
But then, what, what would need to be changed, I'm assuming is the truth and tax notice, and it'll be published between seven days and ten?
Yes, yes, so I will, I said it, it can't be, the truth and taxation goes into the paper, but it can't be, um, any more than seven days or any less than fourteen, it's between seven and fourteen days, okay? So, anyway, so I will go ahead and I'll get that changed as well, which shouldn't be a problem.
And if you think that's what we should do, I just, it seems like I don't want us to miss out.
No, I know, no, I don't, I know, I mean, I know, I'm, I'm always...
Just because they seem to be so off right now.
Yes, and the reason I've always only just got a couple above this, because some people don't understand the ballooning, so then they think after...
No, they think you're doing tax, you know, we, we understand though that you can't go above the rate cap, so, um, it just makes us...
You think fifteen, fifteen percent maybe the, yeah?
I mean, it, it, if it, if it goes up, I mean, we got five percent extra, right? So, that happens to go, it's better than ten, right? So...
So, what are you gonna do, what, what, balloon rate are you doing?
If, if you think fifteen's enough, I'll, I'll just do fifteen percent.
Sure, I can. I'd like to think they aren't very far off now, but based on, however, they got off earlier.
Okay, yes, so, yeah, this will probably change the truth and taxation and be good to go.
I don't understand why.
Of course, the non-restricted funds will stay the same, so, yeah.
Right, those have to be a eight point one one, but...
And, and the reason I say that is because I don't want to guess, I'd rather use the assessors, um, on that, because if I did guess and I put it up any higher and then the rate went up, I do, I wouldn't want to do that. If the rate goes up because of them, then that's them, if the rate goes down because of them, you know what I mean? So, it's just, the best information I have at this point, I don't, that's why I said, I don't know why, was she a pay, you just, or in county, and they're all like, you can't just say, I want this tax rate, you know, instead of doing this guessing game, so...
But it's really smart to put eight point one one for the restricted, un-restricted funds.
And hopefully, we won't get that petty.
Recommend the board approve the display of the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two levy. Approve the display of the estimate, and, and that would be with the balloon change that we discussed. Um, is there a motion to do that? So, we go, Keith? Second. Second, we're gonna go on display.
At the fifteen, I'll be...
Sorry, I said briefing, it didn't say action, so I didn't catch that.
Yeah.
All right, that's my fault.
No, no, I just didn't understand what we were doing, sorry.
So, we're gonna put it on display, and we'll, we'll change it, balloon to fifteen instead of ten. Okay. Any other discussion before we vote on that? Any other discussion, roll call over to this.
Lamb?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Henrichs?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes, and Heather, don't go away, because next we have a stimulated agreement regarding assessment of real estate.
This is good news, because we actually talked before, and everybody was willing to, um, resolve this at six point five million, while the other taxing bodies just wanted them for no more money, to go back and just offer one more time for seven point five million, and they agreed to that, so, not only... And they agreed to that. So not only for twenty-one's, twenty-one, um, but for twenty-two as well. So, so that'll save us, because they had already put in their um, their request to reduce it again for twenty-two, so that'll take all of that away. So we won't have to, you know, pay any more money towards, you know, arguing it, so.
Fight them another year?
No, we will not have to fight them another year. So, um, well, until twenty-three. So, but uh, so anyways, this will keep us at seven point five, um, which is kind of in between the ten point four and the five million they started out with, so.
So why are we settling anything with that?
Because we're the largest taxing body. So um, basically, um, we're just saying that we will agree to the seven point five so it doesn't go to PTAB and we don't have to continue with the arguments or anything like that. See, before, when we talked, um, you guys had said you were comfortable with the six point five, we would've had to have signed off on that as well. Um, but uh, we just, they, they just asked me, or asked us to ask one more time and we got a little more, so I figured it's a win-win for everybody. No more legal fees and we got a little more in, in the uh fair, for, for, fair market value.
Superintendent, I recognize the board approved the sit right here, and that's presenting your motion if you have. So move to the second.
Second.
Further discussion. Roll call over please.
Mcmurray?
Yes.
Henrichs?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Schultz?
President.
And McCollum?
Yes. Uh, six semester, you're not, six percent graduate, six semester graduate. Yes, I have a request for a six semester graduate. Um, students, a good student who has admissions to attend college prior to attending college. I would like to take a gap year, spend time in Christian ministry-based program, allow students to grow in faith and prepare them for their future. Parents are supportive of the early graduation, feel their child's making this choice in an more mature way with a specific plan for the future. Um, I would recommend that the Board of Education approve the student graduating at the conclusion of required coursework.
So moved.
Got a motion to approve that. Is there a second?
I second Hennessy.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Hennessy?
Did you have to sound this? I'll say it after.
Uh, yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Henrichs?
Outstanding.
Uh, McMurray?
Yes.
And McCollum?
Yes.
Um. So, this has happened several times, even since you've been here and the time you've been on the board. And I'm wondering whether it's appropriate for us to come back and amend Board Policy six three hundred to um, change the minimum number of semesters that we are requiring from seven to six. Because we never say no. Uh, and that would allow people to, you know, if a student can get all the graduation requirements in and we're not waving anything, we're just, you know. What do you think of that?
But I would have probably.
So I think it's good to have poli-, if you do it every time, then if you change your policy to reflect that, that's just plain policy. So I agree, I, we've never said no to this, so it seems to me like it would make sense to just codify it into actual policy.
Can you come back to this? In next month and month following, we'll go back in the next month with a new office, with a first year. Yeah, with a first year in the mirror. Thank you. We'll do that. Okay, revision of policy five colon one eighty-five, Dr. Lee. This is a second reading for fifty one eighty-five with regard to FMLA, which has changed the wording to um its unrolling twelve-month calendar, which does go right in line with the negotiation agreement that we made on October third. Order number three. Okay, so this, this adjusts the policies to match what we approved in the negotiation agreement of the MSEA. Um, that was an MSEA question negotiations. We do that. Superintendent approves that we recommend that we approve revision as this presented. Is there a motion to do that?
Some others.
So a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Just for clarification, I believe that was a district request. Oh, it's a district request, I'm sorry. How soon I forget. Roll call over please.
Henrichs?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes, all right. Press one ten, I've aged, I'm clearly. But yes, I provided that in your packet, the uh last version of this. Um, so this is just the first reading, so as you produce the revisions and additions and deletions, um, just if you have questions, let me know. If you'd like to discuss further, let me know. Any initial questions on press one ten? Might as well proceed as Dr. Lee highlighted. Okay, number nine, spring twenty twenty-three referendum. That was a Board of Education request that came from both, some more requests came from both Colleen and Ken. Um. And I will turn and um, I'll give you a chance to present or comment on as you wish.
Uh, well, I think the first question we gotta decide is whether or not we're going to uh have a referendum valid uh in April. So I make the motion that we're going to move forward with a referendum to be decided next. Uh, for an April referendum question, April twenty twenty-three, what are we going forward with? I suggest we have that be a separate decision, just so we don't get kind of our extremes crossed in terms of the first question is, do we wanna do anything in April? Yeah, do we wanna do any referendum question in April?
Can you, or might, where are the five deadlines to have something about?
But we have-
December twelfth.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
December twelfth?
Yeah.
And we have to have the actual language or we just have to have modification?
They are too.
I, so, so the December date is when you, for people running, um, I've gotten two, I just sent your text last week. I've had two separate conflicting dates on, you have to have a question on the ballot, and I still need to get clarification back, or that may be a January thing. So I will follow up with the board. I have not verified that as far as we, we put a question on the ballot.
And, and Dr. Henry's question, is it the actual language or is it just intent to have?
No, I'm, I certainly think that's the, so the last time we did it, we had to have the actual question that was approved on August, whatever it was, by August twenty-second. So any of those dates would be when you have the question, the check, so yeah.
Okay, so possibly January.
Yes.
When I read, I went to the last board of elections and I read December twelfth with a January, like the county clerk has to have it on the ballot in January, but the board had to do the resolution in December so that they sent it to the county clerk and then the county clerk had some deadline in January, so that it needs to be.
So we do have to have a language for the resolution of by December twelfth, is what you're saying?
I mean, that is what it says on the state board of election website. I'm not sure I trust many government agencies anymore to be accurate on their website, so, but that's what it says. So certainly you would not wanna miss that if you wanted to put something on it, if, unless you have really clear.
If we were to run something, we'd have to have a check of the code, right? The language just, you could prove that appears by December nineteen.
Thank you.
December twelfth.
December twelfth, once we find out this. One.
So just to get this conversation started, because there's no point discussing options if we don't have uh enough of the board that wants to put it on the April ballot. My motion is that we're gonna put a referendum question on the April twenty twenty-three ballot.
As we've got motion, that's our second.
I'll second.
Next discussion on that motion.
So if we, can we retract that if we don't, are not happy with the options that, like, if we don't come up with an acceptable option, then it's it's not something that has to move forward, right?
I would assume you can, yeah.
You mean for purposes of this vote?
Well, yeah, I think, I mean, I, I guess I've-
I guess my thought-
I don't wanna tie it into, tie it into something that, that is also-
Oh, I see.
I think so. I think the point is, don't, we shouldn't have a whole discussion to come in the end and say, yeah, but we don't wanna put anything on the ballot. And we have spent hours or whatever, have a huge discussion, and if if in the end the kicker is, I don't want it on the April ballot, then don't have the whole
Right, discussion.
Discussion. So I think, I mean, at least that's what I think you're saying.
Yeah, and I understand your point. Would you like me to amend it to just say something like, assuming we can reach an agreement on something, then we will have a, a question on the ballot. I'm, I'm finding-
Right. And we have to have that agreement reached by
Today.
December twelfth.
Probably today, because we, we need time for them to have the language, or maybe by, well, we do have the December third.
Well, that's a hearing. I'm not sure that's a business meeting.
It's a special meeting.
It's a special meetings, you could.
I, I guess my concern is, I mean, here, here's what, I, I am concerned about turning around and doing it again. Um, quickly, um, I've said from the start that I was not in favor of putting referendum on the April ballot. I was, I've, I've always been transparent with that. Um, after this most recent election, I kind of feel like we doubled our yes votes, our no votes stayed the same. So I think people understand the importance of it, but one of the big reflective pieces that I walked away from um our school board conference this weekend with was the importance of um getting um more voice in the room with regard to um why people voted the way they voted. So not so much, what do you think the best plan is, because everybody's gonna have a different plan. But more so, like we were talking earlier about kind of offering survey, we had to figure out, we wanted to get results so that we could get the language on, like, this timeline is really tight. So I, I'm, I'm torn because I know that our next election would essentially be November of twenty-four.
Is that right?
Is that right?
November twenty-four. Or April of twenty-four.
It's what, it's April and April, he skipped the November.
That'll be the primary.
So April of twenty-four will be the next.
Right.
So I'm torn because I, I know the need, but I also am, am feeling like, I mean, I, I expected it to pass last time. I really expected the referendum to pass last time. And the fact that it didn't gives me pause.
You're more optimistic than I am. I didn't expect it to pass, but um.
So what would make you wanna put another one on in April? Do you think just like, small, I mean, honestly, I thought lower voter turnout in April, so not as many people come and vote, but I kind of thought that last April too, and it was bigger difference in yes and no's.
I, I agree with you. I think the timeline is what bothers me the most, is that having the time to really put together a, a solid plan.
Right, that, you're-
Cause I do think, agreeing with you and what Doug said, and I think that having the right plan is probably the most important thing that we can get a consensus from, but can we, can we get a solid plan and have it with enough clarity by December twelfth and, and be able to get it done? But I do think that the plan has been a major issue, a major barrier as to why we haven't got it done. Amongst others.
But, right, and, and I don't know that it's the plan because we doubled our yes votes, so people understand the importance of junior high. So that part to me, I'm wondering, okay, is it the plan? And, and we're not gonna know that unless we have concrete data to say, here's, here's where we were. We tried to get that before, but it was way too rushed. And I, I mean, I, I don't, I'm, I could go either way. I mean, I, I'm so torn that not, I mean, I don't know. I don't, I, I am less optimistic that something would pass in April than I was this previous election. I would feel more optimistic, I'm sorry, I'll stop talking, but I would feel more optimistic if we waited and tried, tried that following election. Okay.
Well, I wouldn't feel like just kind of waiting and trying, but what I would feel more optimistic about is if we were able to kind of do a reset in communications with the community and try to get everybody.
Back on board?
Or figure out, get back on board with something to be on board with.
Right.
We could come up with a great plan and put it on the ballot in April, but I don't know that anybody in the community feel like we heard, listened, responded. And I think we need to do some of that, if we wanna have a chance of wherever we, uh, whatever passes. That's my thought.
The stuff I've been hearing is just all across the board. I've been hearing from people that want to rip the bandaid off and build it in high school. Well, that's gonna cost upwards of a hundred and twenty million or more.
Right.
I've heard people that want to renovate all schools. We kind of tried to do that once, with the junior high. I've heard people that wanna build a Lincoln Trail. I mean, I just, I hear it from all angles of the spectrum. And getting back to the community somehow collecting data. I need to, I think we need to focus on that, getting all our voices involved to come up with a good plan.
I think whatever the plan is, there needs to be a lot of explanations to why that's the best plan, right? Because everybody's everybody thinks their plan is the best. Because it's their plan, they like it. I get that. Harvey will love this, I mean, he likes, he always, he always go to high school and, and move to junior high in the old high school. I get that, but couple problems. I have one, the most expensive option on the table. And recently, the less expensive option got more than most expensive option on that. Is that a correlation to be less expensive? I'm not sure. I don't know. You might think that might have something to do with it, but it doesn't. Um, and then the other option on that is, you know, do, I don't know if people really understand that we don't do middle school, Molly, we used to do junior high, and just throwing those kids into a high school building doesn't work logistically. So then the question is, how much does a new high school cost us and how much do that spend around the current high school to do what we needed to do as a junior? I don't know, but I think we need some time to kind of hear why people feel the way they feel. And then make sure that whatever option there, they think they like, that they really understand all ramifications of that option. You know, I've heard it was built up in three to four million, then in ten years, go to high school. Okay, well. Okay, but are you really committed to do the high school in ten years? Cause if not, we're kind of screwing ourselves on that point potentially. I, I think I think there's a need to go. I'm not even sure how to do it at this point. Certainly, we don't wanna run whole, oh, I shouldn't say that. I don't think we wanna run an entire program like we did with one of them. Again, we do, I don't know, but we need to go back somehow and give some input, I think, from folks. And then have a chance for some community dialogue about why why the positives and negatives or, or whatever the community's thinking. The community's thinking.
Ken, do you want to add more about what you were thinking as far as moving forward?
Sure, so I. My biggest thing is I would hate to lose this opportunity to offer those voters an option. Um, we. If we don't act now, we will be sitting.
Here.
Doing nothing for, well, I mean, it's over here because it'll be April twenty four, so you're looking at a year and five months from now. I I think we should offer an option. And we can still do all those things that you talked about. We can still try and gather data. We can still try and engage with the public. Uh, I mean, to be honest, I I from when. This whole process began way back before Bulldog Blueprint, I've been engaging with the public this whole time. Asking everyone I see, what do you think about this? And getting feedback that way. So, I mean, I don't think that. I I don't look at the engagement as like something you do for a fixed amount of time, and then you move on and do something else. But it's it's a constant process. And in the meantime, for me, I think it's worth offering an option. Some kind of option um in April to see if we can do something to improve our current. Our current issues.
I I don't think we'll be doing nothing between now and then. I think one of the things that I that I have heard. A lot of times is that, and and I said it myself, like, it's really hard. For parents to understand the reality of some of the the class size issues and the impact on education because our teachers are outstanding. And I truly believe that if people don't have kids who are experiencing the junior high right now, they they don't understand the. The realities of the junior high. Um, you know, there are two bathrooms. In the junior high, like, that's insane. And when you think about. How well our our students are doing, it's hard to make a case like, oh, it's not impacting your learning that much. It is, it's going to get worse. So I I really. Feel like if we were to use the next several months, you know, you said we can still do engagement and we can still do surveys, yes, but again, it's going to be super rushed. Because of this quick turnaround deadline. So I almost feel like if we can do some kind of, I don't. Bulldog Blueprint, whatever, here, there, anywhere, I if it's some kind of stakeholder conversations, but to me, the data of. Why people voted the way they voted would be really impactful. And we weren't able to get that data as. Well, as we should have because it was like that. It wasn't thorough. It couldn't be thorough because of the deadline, and I'm worried that that same thing's going to happen again.
So what I'm suggesting is doing that in parallel. So we put our referendum question up, and we start gathering that data right now.
But we have to, we have to have the language. To put on the ballot. How are we going to have the language to put on the ballot if we don't get feedback before we get the language?
We can, in this room, make our best effort to decide on an option to offer the community, and then let them use their voice in the ballot box. And at the same time, while people are thinking about what they're going to vote, at the same time, we can do this kind of engagement. We can do this kind of data gathering. There's no reason that we have to separate those tasks.
But what happens if we put a question on the ballot and then we draw this data gathering, we find out it's not what people want, but then somehow it actually passes? And then we're like, oh, wait, that wasn't the right option.
Well, I would argue that if something passes at the ballot, that's the voters clearly telling us that that's what they want. No amount of data gathering or community engagement, in my opinion, should ever overrule a decision in the ballot box, okay?
But on the other hand. Let's look at it the other way. We put something on the ballot and never get out of the air, it becomes, it becomes. Pretty clear that I'm like, what's on the ballot? And that looks like we just did something about listening. You know, you mentioned that you've been engaging with people all along. I I feel like I've been engaging with people. I think we feel like. We've done other things to engage with people. In this, we did a whole bunch of lunches, a bunch of junior high. And my mind, um, Bulldog Blueprint was a big engagement piece, but you know what? Voters are coming, and if people are coming, we've not engaged. We haven't listened. I mean, we're hearing that time and time again. Now you're on the ballot box, at the ballot box, full of conversations. All the fact that you think you've been listening, and I think I've been listening, and I think we've all been listening, zero.
I I believe you've been listening, man. But again, I think. It would be wise for us to give the the voters an opportunity to speak again in the ballot box. That's, that's just my philosophy on it.
I mean, the option we offered them was the same building twice. We did not actually change what we were offering. We just took some of the things that we heard were important to voters off of the second referendum. A different offering. Would be a different way to solve the space issue that actually impacts the entire district across all buildings. And that is a theme that I think we have heard from the very beginning, which is we don't want to pay a bunch of tax money. To solve a space issue in one building. We want that to trickle down through the entire district. There's a way, or multiple ways, that we could actually impact. All of the buildings. It's just not with building the junior high. And that's really, all we did was offer the same. Plan twice to the to the voters.
I keep hearing you say that. I'm confused when you say that the first referendum didn't address space in all the buildings, but it did. Why, I'm confused. Why do you keep saying that?
Because the way that we presented it was the very first thing we're going to do is build a junior high.
It's the highest need, okay.
Can I just finish?
Sure.
Saying.
Yeah.
And then we said, if there's enough money, we will address the rest of the space needs.
No, we never said that. This is just, this.
I don't need you screaming at me, Sunny. I'm telling you what I heard.
I need you to not be spreading false information.
I am not spreading.
We are, we never said.
For God's sake, just keep talking and cut me off. Get again.
Well, I would like to stop the misinformation. We never said, if there's enough money, we'll address these other issues. That's not true.
It is true, and this is not my opinion. I am telling you the feedback that I got. So you can yell at me all that you want. But the reason that people told me they didn't vote yes on that first referendum is what they heard was. Costs are going up. Oh, what is the point of even, I don't actually know how rude you are.
Keep going.
Why bother?
The misinformation they heard came from this room. It came from when you.
I get you want to point the fingers in this side of the room. What I'm telling you is that is inaccurate and incorrect. And the level of rude means I'm kind of done talking here. I can't believe the conduct and the way that you think it's appropriate. To continue to cut people off and screen when you're not happy with what's being said. It's ridiculous behavior.
Thank you. What I will say is, I'm stopping you from spreading misinformation. The reason that people believe that we were going to run out of money. Is because people at this board table sat here and said. If the junior high, if we run out of money, the rest of the buildings won't be built. That was never an accurate statement.
Your statement just now is not accurate either.
What what part is inaccurate? I'm not understanding.
I'm not having this discussion. So I would like to talk about kids.
Yeah.
And the fact that we don't have enough space for them. And that. We are backed into a corner here, and that is manufactured of our own doing. This board voted in August. To put a referendum on the ballot and to continue having a discussion so that we can be prepared to put something on the straight ballot. And then we did not do what we said we would do and wanted that we would do. And so now, in the in the whole discussion, at that time was, we're going to end up in this position right here. And so that's why there was some wisdom to say, if we want to put something on the ballot, let's. Keep discussing so that we don't end up in that same position again. Because we did put the same major building on the ballot. If people didn't like the idea of a junior high the first time, they didn't like it the second time. The problem with waiting and talking is, first of all, we apparently don't do that very well. Because we've been out of space for fifteen years, and nothing has ever happened. And then we've been apparently trying to get feedback for three years, and. Uh, people say we aren't listening. So at some point. We have to address space. So we either, and and the and the problem is there are current students. And students about to come up. We can't just keep waiting and waiting and waiting. Because right now, we have teachers teaching in these buildings. Right now, we have students in these buildings. So we can't just say, oh, we prefer just to wait a couple of years before we even come up with a plan to figure it out. So we have to make some options, or. Alternatively, I think we need to borrow the sales tax money and start putting additions on buildings. Even if it's a short term fix until we can figure it out, we need more classrooms at Lincoln Trail and more classrooms at the junior high. And there are other ways to solve that problem, and we could ask the community if they want to participate in solving the other ways. Or we have to start taking action, but we can't just sit around and let there be no space and wring our hands, and everyone blames somebody else. Instead of just. Doing something to get more space for these.
No, but let's be accurate, because you just said we've known for fifteen years there were problems, and we've not done anything. Well, I'm dealing with this debt for fifteen years. We've not been out of space for fifteen years, and we have done some things over the last fifteen years. Uh, maybe the things that certain people don't like, maybe the things you don't like. I don't know. But don't sit here and tell the public that we've nobody been out of space for fifteen years, because that is not accurate. And don't say we haven't done anything for fifteen years, because that is also not accurate. And that's where we're having difficulty having these discussions, is because we're driving in a bunch of crap. That just is really not representative of reality.
So I will clarify that my. Comment is due to the newspaper articles that you could read from fifteen years ago. Where the principals and the administration are repeatedly quoted as saying we're out of space and we're out of space at the junior high. And there are problems at the junior high, we need more space. It's, we have this many students, it's filled for this many students, and so thi- this has been on the the. Table for a long time.
I'd love to see those articles.
What addition?
Yeah, I was like.
Well.
But whatever, the the point is, we have to solve the space. We have to get these kids more space. We could put a referendum on the ballot, something different than what we've had before, and see if the public. Wants to do that, or we could. Start building additions with the tax money we have so the taxes don't go up. But somehow we have to get more space. And the idea of just. Letting it get worse and worse and worse until we twist people's arms into doing the plan that somebody wants to do. It's that there are kids in there. We have to do something for those kids. And so I I don't like it either. I I wanted to start this discussion a long time ago. And I asked and asked and asked and asked for us to have this discussion, so that we could have months and months and months to talk to the community. About what we could put on, but here we are. So the past is the past. We have to figure out what we can do the best we can with what we've heard and what we know. And we did get a lot of feedback last time that we didn't really take into account when we put our referendum on, so.
So can we vote on the motion?
Can you restate the motion, please?
Sure. If we're able to reach a decision on a a plan to be proposed in a referendum, we will put a referendum up in April of twenty twenty three.
As in tonight. If we're able to reach a consensus tonight.
Before the final demo.
And the only meeting we have scheduled right now is to support.
We take that into the final demo.
Kevin, we got the motion on the table. It's my second, Mr. Keith is replacing the tasking that we did for a vote on it. So let's have a little call.
Excuse me, Schultz?
Yes. Lamb?
No.
McMarry? Um, I am a no because I'm concerned about the ability to actually get to a consensus based on this whole experience right here. Keith?
Yes?
Hennessy?
Yes.
Henry?
Unfortunately, I think I'm a no because I feel like the same thing, we can't come to a consensus as a board. It's just not going to happen.
McColl?
I don't know.
So then I requested the next board meeting, we talked about borrowing our sales tax money and addressing space issues in our district. We have to do something for these kids and teachers. We have to.
I agree with that being an agenda item.
I I agree with that too. I mean, there's got to be, we're going to have to have some Band-Aid until we can, I don't know if it's a bigger plan, so.
Heather, can you also bring costs for additional portals? Or tents?
Okay, next up is contractual salary adjustments. Is there anyone in the board who would prefer to go into close session and have more discussion on this before we act?
Uh, yeah, I think a motion to go into close session.
Yeah. Um, so we're going to go into close session. For discussion of minutes lawfully closed, open news act, whether that's for purpose of approval by the body. Or the minutes of some annual review of this is mandated by section two one oh six. Number two, we're going to go into close session for the appointment of compensation for some performance, successful specific concordance with the individuals who serve them in the contract of our educational setting. Versus like volunteers, whether public body or legal counsel, public body, bringing your test one and play lines against authority. As a specific individual serves in a contract of our recreational educational setting, or volunteer to the public body or against legal counsel, public body, insurance liberty. However, meaning consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a company, such as a local or an increased wage, and the act. We have the closing of the open public, according to this act. I believe we also have student matter.
Yes.
Individual student matter. Have I hit everything? So close session for those reasons. Uh, I will, normally we do not conduct business when we come out of close, I would anticipate we would vote on that number here. But I would suspect we may vote on that another time. Um, after we come out of the close session.
So can we have the YouTube video brought back up if we do that, please?
Well, later we may have to stay.
Can we do that?
We can come back later.
Okay. Thank you.
You have to stay for that?
Do you have to stay if you do that?
Yeah.
You just have to stay.
Well, yes, to stay, we want it brought back up. We're saying we don't care if it's brought back up. As long as it's clear, if you want it brought back up, it's fine that you're staying. Hearing nothing, the last I heard was you wanted it brought back up, so thanks for volunteering to stay. Um, so your motion, uh, go into close session for those reasons. I agree with your motion. Oh, you did? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Have a roll call.
Keith?
Yes?
McMarry?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
McColl?
Yes.
Okay, you're good. Okay, we are back in open session, at least temporarily, to handle item number ten on the agenda, which is contractual salary adjustments. Uh, these are, are put in place following our collective bargaining agreement settlement. And the superintendent recommends the board approve contractual salary agreements for following individuals. I note that most of them are one point six salary adjustment. It took forward a two percent salary adjustment for two, adjustment for two non-certified employees who are in the retirement pipeline. So I'm going to read the employees and the dollar mark of the salary adjustment. This will take a minute. Uh, Dr. Nicole Rumble, nineteen hundred, fourteen dollars and forty-three cents. Christine Northrup, twenty-one hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. Heather Smith, nineteen hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-three cents. Chad Benedict, seventeen seventy-eight point three eight. Nathan Mills, sixteen sixty-six point forty-five. Megan Hunter, fourteen ninety-three point seventeen. Ryan Martin, fourteen ninety-three point seventeen. Matt Hendley, sixteen eighty-one thirty-one. Patrick Bailey, fourteen thirty-seven twenty-three. Marissa Franks, twelve hundred dollars even. Doug Fisher, twelve fifty-nine point oh-one. Ted Martin, eleven eighty-four point two-six. Dustin Day, twelve seventeen forty-two. Marissa Hill, twelve twenty-nine point fifty-two. Dr. Jeremy Rourke, twelve hundred dollars even. Steve Curtis, twelve thirty-five point five-one. Jared Lynn, thirteen thirty-three point twenty-two. Dave Keist, six ninety-nine point thirty-five. Judy Ganta, fourteen eighty-one point two-two. Cheryl Dixon, thirteen thirty-one point eighty-six. Stacy Fisher, six thirty-two point zero-zero. Chantel Heimle, eight thirty-one point eighty-one. Don Quinley, seven eleven point eight-eight. Michael Saul, six seventy-two point zero-zero. Zachary Wood, six seventy-two point zero-zero. Katzen Zanica, eight hundred point zero-zero. Julie McGuffey, six hundred and eighty-eight point zero-zero. And Kaylee McGuffey, eleven eighty-four point zero-zero. Is there a motion to that effect? So, Lance, is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. McMarry?
Yes.
Hemmings?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Um, I just want to clarify my vote here. I in no way want to give the impression that I don't support these raises, but the process for this has just felt like it's backed us into a corner and I don't like the process. We talk about changing the process moving forward, I think that's the right thing to do. But because of the way that this has been presented, I'm going to vote present.
Keith?
Yes.
Schultz?
Okay. We'll go back and go like that. Okay, continue.
Schultz? When we first had these raises, I advocated for a four points, no, I did four points six, a higher raise for all our administrators. Um, and I was told that we could not do that. Um, and now we are doing that out of the fact and that makes me very nervous and so I vote.
Pardon, McColl?
Yes. Okay. Question was, is that particular one here over, you know, what we contractually do now? All right, this time, we need to return to closed session to deal with a student issue that we didn't get to, or we don't close session. Is there any other business we have for closed session? Nope, so we will, after we vote to closed session, we will just continue the YouTube feed and we will not turn YouTube feed back up. So is there a motion to go into closed session for a student issue? So, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Hemmings?
Yes.
McMarry?
Yes.
McColl?
Yeah, so we'll say goodbye to the public for the night and to Jared Lynn. And we will finish up our one closed session.